Good afternoon, everyone. Councilor Miller's? Good afternoon. And welcome to this meeting of North and East Plans Panel. My name is councillor Javid Akter and I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being live streamed on Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without being present? Could I also remind members of public present at the this formal meeting? While we welcome your attendance, we ask that you do not approach member of the panel during the meeting and the proceedings are observed quietly without any interruption. If this is not adhered to you, may be asked to leave. The meeting will be suspended while this is facilitated. North and East Plans Panel deals with applicants from north, east and east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all relevant information from applicant, members of the public, council offices to help members of the panel to make their decision. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourselves? Start from left, David.
Thank you very much. Chair David Newbury, Lead Planning Officer for the Plans Panel and I'll be presenting the items this afternoon.
Good afternoon, councillor Adel Ray from Bromley in Stanley Ward.
Good afternoon. It's councillor David Jenkins from Killemboch and Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Bromley, Horsteth and Rawdon.
Good afternoon, councillor Jones, Horsteth.
Good afternoon, councillor Michael Miller, representing Kipexham Ethley Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Dawn Siri, Pottsill Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Barry Anderson, Adela Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon, Debbie Oldham and I'm the clerk for the panel.
Good afternoon, Philippa Plontrie Valley, Principal Legal Officer.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Thank you, everyone. Moving to agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through item one and five, please?
Thank you, Chair. Under agenda item number one, there are no appeals. Agenda item two, there's no exempt information. Agenda item three, there's no late items. Under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interests? I'll say none, thank you. Under agenda item five, we have apologies from councillors Bithl, Lloyd and Stevenson. Councillor Anderson is attending as councillor Stevenson's substitute and councillor Jones is attending as councillor Lloyd's substitute. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Item six, minutes of previous meeting held on 24th of July 2025. Do members accept these minutes as correct record? I'll assume correct unless indicated otherwise. Matters arising from minutes? Are there any matters arising from the minutes? No? Item seven, battery energy storage facility and associate works at land of Newton Lane, which David will present.
Thank you very much, Chair. I should explain, I'm only presenting the item because Louise Y who has been dealing with this particular proposal just happens to be on her summer holidays at the moment, so I'm just stepping in for her. And also apologies to members for bringing you in simply just for one particular item. On this item, we do have the real prospect of an appeal, of this application going to appeal. If we didn't determine this plans panel, it's likely then we'd have an appeal against non-determination. Council's perspective as a local planning authority to have a clear position on the application. As we do have at least a couple of members who weren't at the plans panel last time, I'll quickly go through the slides just to re-familiarise members with the actual proposal itself and some of the issues. As you're aware, we've got a number of, well, a couple of reports in front of you with a number of appendices. So what I'll do is I would just also just run through appendix one, which is the report which gives a summary of two recent appeal decisions for very similar proposals that were received after we drafted the last panel report but before the plans panel, the July plans panel actually sat. And in that report, it deals with some guidance on appeals and the award costs at appeals. The other appendices are the original July plans panel report, copies of the two appeal decisions I've already mentioned and illustrative material, which just provides so some visual context, as it were, and some background information for those two appeals. So members will see that there's a site outlined in red on the screen in front of you. It's just to the north-east of Allerton Bywater, some junction of Barnesdale Road and Newton Lane. Things to note from this particular slide is the, we've got the substation over here to which the Bezz will connect with. We've got Lyn Dyke, which runs through there. Footpath, public footpath that runs through the southern portion of the site, cuts across southern portion of the site. Allerton Bywater, main body of that, I'm highlighting there. Now, we've got a series of aerial shots which gradually get closer and closer to the site. So the site is in this bit, just down here, and you can see in the main body of Allerton Bywater there. Next one, bit closer in. So the site's here. As members, as we discussed last time, it does exclude that bit of planting that runs up that boundary there. That's outside of the application site. The ownership of that planting isn't known. There we've got the substation, Allerton Bywater, and you can make out the path that cuts across and the water course follows that route through there. And there's a closer view of the site. The policy context for this particular proposal is that it's located in the green belt and I'll go into that in a little bit more depth later on. And it's also in a special landscape area. Now, we've just got a series of photos which just show the site and its surroundings. This is taken from the road junction looking towards the entrance to the footpath that are highlighted, that cuts across southern part of the site. Here's the road junction again. Or the road junction. This is Newton Lane. This is a shot of the hedgerow, where the point of access will cut through onto Newton Lane. So there is a 12 metre stretch worth of hedgerow which would be removed to facilitate that. Another shot looking along Newton Lane towards Barnesdale Road. More Newton Lane, back to the footpath and the pedestrian crossing which leads to the footpath which leads into the site. Now, I've got a slide or two showing the layout. So we have the Newton Lane there. There's the point of access which runs up, cuts across the footpath. This bit, as my eyes see it, is in blue, but it may be a different colour to you because I'm slightly colourblind. That's just the compound, construction compound. Then we had the run of battery units and transformers, substation, and there we've got the Suds Pond. And this is a shot looking from just beyond the footpath up towards where the built development would be. The battery industry storage system will be up here. This is looking from where the battery energy storage system, the Bezz, would be, looking back down towards footpath. That's a view of, looking from west to east with a footpath running on the left-hand side of that slide. Now, we've just got a few slides, which are just, concentrate on this one for a little bit. Top part of the slide here shows the layout. So we've got all the batteries and the respective transformers located in there. And there's a cross-section which just shows the batteries and the degree of separation between them. Not an awful lot of detail on that, but it gives you a general idea as to the sort of utilitarian appearance and functional appearance of this, of the development. Just focus on this slide just for a little bit because there was some talk, it's difficult to decipher this, but essentially this is a landscaping plan. There are something in the region of 64, I think, heavy standard trees to be planted. These in the main run along this boundary of the site here adjacent to the open field. There's some spraddock planting, heavy standard trees in a limited number in here. And we have a further concentration up in around this areas, they're dotted around the Suds. And then we have wild meadow flow planting in this area here, a new bit of hedgerow, which would, 147 metres, if memory serves me correctly, which would stretch along the southern part of the compound, the Bezz compound and up its western elevation. And underneath the trees, we have a mixture of the trees that would be planted along this elevation or this part of the site here, some woodland and scrub planting. So that's the, that's the scheme which is now for members. So what we have now for members, we brought a report, as I said, to the July plans panel. That report was carried an officer recommendation that planning permission be granted. Members at that plans panel resolved not to accept that recommendation, resolved that planning permission should be refused on the basis of inappropriate developments to the green belt and harm to the green belt. And that's set out on page 19, reason one. And then secondly, on the risk to public safety, fire safety, failure to meet the National Fire Chiefs Council's guidance. And again, that's, that reason is set out on pages 19 to 20. And we resolved to bring back a report to plans panel with the detailed reasons for members to, to consider. At the plans panel, we also said that because we had those appeal decisions in, we've provided a summary of those appeal decisions for members to, to consider. Those appeal decisions, therefore, as I said, for a very similar form of development, both for Bezz developments. And I'll quickly run through, run through those, those appeals for you. Both those appeals concerned Bezz developments on agricultural land, in setting open fields or on the edge of open fields in one of the cases, both within the green belt. There are some differences between those proposals and ones that members have before them. Those proposals weren't located in an area of special landscape character or a special landscape area. There's differences in terms of the layout and some differences in terms of the layout of developments and the number of batteries, units that are involved. And there's some contextual differences as you'd expect to get with different sites. Nevertheless, they're for very similar forms of development and the key policy, planning policy tests are essentially the same. So it is important to be aware of how the planning inspectorate, two different planning inspectors have dealt with those policy aspects. It is important because if we end up at appeal with these particular proposals, these appeal decisions will be used by the appellant and quoted against the council because obviously they lend weight to, because they've been allowed, they lend weight to the applicants and the appellant's argument. So if I deal with, I'll just concentrate on the green belt issue and the public safety issue because they're the key issues that members have identified. So the way that the inspectors dealt with the green belt issue is very similar in the way that we dealt with green belt issues set out in the original July report. So they examined whether the sites were grey belt or not. And that was more or less their, their starting point. Now, I'm not going to quote all the policy paragraphs and references, but I'll take you through the, the tests. So the first test that they had, they apply, was does the land, and this is the land, not the development, so does the site itself in its undeveloped state strongly contribute to certain green belt purposes? So that's key, the key test is does it strongly contribute? And first test they looked at is checking the unrestricted sprawl of large built-up areas. Now, as ever, we're planning, planning terminology used in policy has specific meaning. And in terms of large built-up areas, each inspector said, well, the large built-up area is the city of Leeds. That was, and that's following the guidance that's set out in the planning policy guide, practice guidance. So it's not the nearest villages to these particular sites. So for example, in the one in Carlton in South Leeds, it was on the edge of Carlton. That wasn't regarded as a large built-up area. So the inspectors came to the conclusion because Carlton's not a large built-up area and the other one was set in a field well away from any towns or villages, that they didn't affect large built-up areas. Well, in fact, they, they didn't take the towns and villages, they simply took it back to Leeds. Leeds is a large built-up area, set well away from Leeds, therefore they can't contribute to, make us strongly contribute to preventing unrestricted sprawl of a large built-up area. Second one was about preventing neighbouring towns from merging in with one another. And again, they said because towns has a very specific meaning, has to be identified, it wasn't near an identified town, either the one on Warren Lane or the one in Carlton. So by default, it can't, that piece of land can't stop towns from merging into each other because it's not located near a town. And then the second one was about, sorry, the third test that they had to apply was about preserving the setting and special character of historic towns. And again, historic towns were identified. And again, these sites, as with our site that we're talking about today, is not set near a historic town. So therefore it can't have an impact, a negative impact on the setting and special character of those towns. So as there was no conflict with those three purposes, inspectors then moved on, said, well, this could be appropriate development or not inappropriate development in the green belt, but there are further tests that need to be applied. It's come to that view. And to do that, inspectors had to look at the two remaining purposes, stated purposes of green belt planning policy and how they sat against that. One was to assist, another purpose was to assist in safeguarding the countryside from encroachment. Now, both inspectors accepted that the developments would result in encroachment within the green belt. But the test they had to apply was whether that encroachment would fundamentally undermine, because that's the words that are used in planning policy, whether it fundamentally undermined that particular purpose. And you'll see from the appealing inspectors' decisions that essentially they said, well, it's such a small area, that I think it was 2.5 hectares was one, and one was 1.7 hectares, which is the same size as our application site, that when you look at it in the context of the green belt, all of Leeds is green belt, it goes around the whole of Leeds, it's such a small percentage, it was 1.7, was something like 0.05%, that it can't be taken to fundamentally undermine the safeguarding of the countryside from encroachment in that context because it's such a small percentage. And then the second or the last purpose was to assist in urban regeneration. Again, they said, well, it doesn't do that. Developing these rural sites doesn't contribute to assisting in urban regeneration. But again, it's very difficult to fundamentally argue that it fundamentally undermines that particular purpose because it is such a small site and makes such a small contribution. So there were other tests that needed to apply. One was, is there a demonstrable unmet need for this type of proposed development? Well, it's accepted nationally because of the situation in terms of moving to net zero, that there is an unmet need nationally for this proposed development. And then it was, is it in a sustainable location? And the way the inspectors, and they refer to two particular paragraphs in the MPPF around that. And the way one of the inspectors dealt with that at least was, well, it is sustainable because nature of the development, apart from construction, doesn't really generate an awful lot of traffic to and from the site. And it has a safe access, which is one of the key tests which is set out in planning policy. So on that basis, and because of the proximity, they need to be close to substations on that basis, they considered that it was in a sustainable location. And then there's a further test which about meeting the golden rules which apply to housing developments that weren't relevant in this particular instance. So when the inspectors gone through those particular tests, they came to the view, well, actually, it is grey belt. It's, it's not how necessarily grey belt has always been portrayed in the planning, well, in the press generally, because that tended to talk about, the early talks about petrol stations, disuse petrol stations and that type of thing. It's not a visual quality assessment, it's assessment against the tests which I've, I've applied. And those are the same tests that the officers set out in the officers' report when it originally came. So on that basis, the inspectors came to the view that these particular Bezzes were acceptable in the green belt because they developed green belt, green belt land, sorry, grey belt land, important distinction. So then the public's safety and fire issue was obviously prevalent in both appeals. Like the situation that we have here, quite understandably, there's lots of, there was lots of local concern about those particular aspects on this development and each inspector acknowledged that. On those, both those appeal schemes, both of them failed to comply with the National Fire Chief's guidance because they had a single point of vehicle access, single point of access to the site. The National Fire Chief's guidance recommends two. And the degree of separation between the battery units is recommended in the guidance as six metres. Both fell well short of that. I think they were both around about 2.5 to 3 metres, which is very similar to the distance that we have in our particular case here. But it was noted that the, since the guidance had been drafted, time and technology have moved on, there's, there's new guidance on the way. And that each scheme had been designed with mitigation for fire ignition and instant, instant mitigation measures and that these could be controlled by condition. And in light of that, the inspectors basically came to view, well, the appellant's knows instances, have taken them as far as they can. And there wasn't strong reason to dismiss the appeals for those reasons. They found the fire and safety aspect to be acceptable. So members really just need to be mindful of those two, two appeal decisions in coming to a decision on this application. There is a bit of a summary also at the end of the appendix one report about the number of appeals that we, that have been received nationally for these sort of proposals. I think there's around about 24, 14 of which have been in green belt. Of the 14 green belt ones, all have been allowed, save for one, which filled in the gap, was, which was on a bit of land, which was a narrow bit of land between a city and a town. So we're going back to that definition in guidance about towns and large urban areas. It is important because if members need to come to be mindful of that and the officer advice they've received and come into a final decision, because what you've got to be mindful of is you've got to be confident that the local planning authority, if we get to appeal, can substantiate the suggested reasons for refusal of that appeal. It's important, not only in terms of trying to defend the appeal, but if we can't substantiate the reasons for, for refusal, then we're open to an application and award of costs, a substantive ward of costs against the local planning authority. And there is in the appendix one report, there, there are some extracts quoted from central government guidance on the award of, on the award of costs. Therefore, it's for members to decide whether you're content with to refuse planning permission on the lines set out in the report, or whether you want to come to an alternative decision. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, David. Do member have any questions? Councilor Anderson?
I accept I'm new to this and everybody's been through the pain beforehand, but I'm being asked to make a decision today. I want some clarification if possible on a number of points. One, the training that we receive regularly every year is very, very explicitly clear. If an application is policy compliant, we should not be refusing it if it is fully policy compliant. In this instance, it appears to be fully policy compliant. So why should I be putting, setting that aside? Because in my opinion, the case has been made that this one is fully compliant. So what's the legal advice to me on that? Because that's the training I've been given. You've employed very senior people to give me this training and I might not always like it, but that's the advice I've been given. Why am I being invited to ignore that advice that's been given to me by colleagues who know a lot more about planning than I do?
I mean, you're not being invited to ignore it, it was the, just the meeting was minded to go against the officer recommendation, but the officer recommendation was minded to approve.
Right.
Because of the policy compliant elements and it was policy compliant, but taking everything into the round. So you're invited to sort of take all the information that has been presented to you and make a judgment on the, on the application.
The argument seems to come down to, is it green belt or grey belt? Have we sought council's opinion to get a legal view as to whether or not, based on the decisions that have been made by the inspector, we, because that council will have to defend us when it comes to an appeal, have we got council's opinion now to say that they have a defendable position to justify this as green belt as opposed to the emerging views that what is becoming grey belt? Because nobody knew what grey belt was going to be to begin with, but that is a lot, like a lot of laws in this country, it's made by precedent. So what's the position in terms of council's opinion on the definition of green and grey belt now?
In answer to the direct question on this particular case, no, we haven't got to the stage where we're talking to council about the, the policy issues and whether it's actually grey belt or not. That's, that's an officer judgment based on going through the, the policy tests. And it is a matter of fact that, and it's, it's a matter of public record because it's on appendix three, page 61 of, of these papers, you'll see it, paragraph three there. And this is the appeal decision Warren Lane. And it says in there that the city council advisor planning inspector no longer contested the reasons for refusal and those were treated to be withdrawn. Now, the circumstances of that was that we refused planning permission for the Warren Lane development before the government changed the guidance. So the position materially changed in December 2024, when the revised national planning policy framework was issued and grey belt came in. When grey belt came in, we already had this appeal with us. And at that point in time, we took advice, we applied the tests, came to view as officers and took advice from our council who was representing at us at that particular inquiry. And the advice that we got back at that particular point in time from council was that we did not have a good or a strong case to contest, to contest the appeal. And that was on the, almost on the birth of grey belt, as it were, because that was in the very early part of 2025, before we had all the before we had all the subsequent appeal decisions. Now, that is a different site, a different context. But we had gone through the same sort of policy tests and we're testing them out and seeking legal advice at that particular time. But in terms of this particular application, no, we haven't sought any advice in that respect at the moment.
So moving then on to compensation. One of my duties as a councillor is to make sure that public money is spent wisely, correctly and legally. So based on this, what we've got before us today, we are live, we are, there is a significant risk that we could be liable to reasonable compensation having to be paid out, which this council cannot afford to spend money when the for something that is going to cost us money that could cause us problems. We've got financial problems. This would actually exacerbate our problems if we have to pay this out. Am I correct in that, the way that I've stated that?
I suppose it depends what you mean by compensation, council. If you're talking about the potential of award of costs against councillors at at appeal. Well, it is the advice that if we can't substantiate the the reasons for refusal at appeal with reference to planning policy, then we may be held to be have acted unreasonably, unreasonably. And if we've acted unreasonably, then we are liable to a cost claim and a potential award of costs. Now, we can't prejudge it because we're we're not in that particular position there at that at this point in time. But it is an obvious risk that we can see, particularly in light of we can see how previous inspectors have dealt with very similar similar schemes. So there's there's an obvious risk there, but we can't say for
My final question, my final question is, what is my personal liabilities? If I end up making a political decision today rather than a planning based decision? Because based on planning, I have to agree with officers that this is a a sound decision. If I make the decision to go along with what the latest recommendations are, in my judgment, that's a political view I'd be making. How do I personally stand? Because I would be making a political judgment and we are trained again, this is a quasi judicial process that we're in and we should not be making political decisions. How do I personally, everybody is up to everybody else individually how they want to use their conscience. But how do I sell my conscience in making a political decision rather than a planning based decision?
I mean, planning decisions have to be made in accordance with the law. So section thirty eight six of the planning sector, which is act and all the guidance, as is outlined in the original officer report, that stipulate how decision making in planning is to be made. So that's in accordance with the development plan, taking into account material considerations and making that judgment and that balance as you're taught as members at planning committee at the training we have mandatorily. If a decision in planning is not taken in accordance with those directives from statute and the national guidance and the national policy, then that is arguably open to the risk of judicial review and being challenged because it's not been a lawfully made decision. I believe that comes, you know, that's that's the law. So it comes, it sort of trumps any political political basis for decision making.
Can I also add, Barry, you wasn't at the last meeting. We had a good discussion on this particular item and I probably will need the legal advice as well. There isn't any political decision has taken either at the last meeting or will be on this meeting. Now, we 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 all work hard to make sure the whatever the members feel should come before us. Now, the having purpose of the panel is not all the time, everybody agrees with the officers. And this is the reason elected members like yourself bring items before us so we can have a open discussion on these issues. So not sure whether you've got the political scenario into this because it is quite, I'm quite upset because last three years since I have been chairing this panel, there hasn't been any political interference. And the last fifteen years since I've been on the on the panels on and off, never have been. We all work together to make sure the benefit of our cities. So if the members felt what how they felt at the last meeting, this is why we're here.
Yeah, we're we're it's on two bases. One is we've signed up to the climate change policies and this if we are going to meet our climate obligations, we need facilities like this which are safe to introduce. So we've we've got a commitment, those of us who are part of the CAC committee, I feel have a duty to follow the policies set out by this council. We may not always agree with them, but that's the policies that have been agreed, signed off by council, been taken through. So that's one of my issues got. And also when it comes to planning policies as well, there is nobody argues probably more against a lot of the planning policies brought forward by this council than me. But I've when when they're democratically voted on and approved, this change, in my view, this is a change to the council's policies has not been before development plans panel. To the best of my knowledge, our referral has not been made to joint plans panel to look at things differently as a result of the previous decisions that have been made. So I would have expected as a result of those decisions to be made.
Let's let's talk about what we've got before us, please. I think we're just going off the agenda here.
No, what I'm trying to say is, I personally feel that I've been given evidence that the officers are telling me the advice because they're meant to guide me is that I that this decision is sound if it was to be approved. And if we're not, they aren't totally convinced that it's a sound decision.
Barry, just let let me just remind you again and then I'll move on. We had this item at the last meeting, we had a open discussion on this. We heard everyone and the decision was made. Now the offices are coming back to us and saying, these are the things that we have discussed. And 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 it's up to you as a members, whichever way you're going to go, this I'm keep coming back. This is planning issue and we're discussing a plan what's before us. And this has got nothing to do with any politics. And if you have any political items or any agendas, let's have a discussion outside this room. But here, let's be, let's talk about the item before us, councillor Bromley and then councillor Miller.
Thank you, Chair. Really appreciate those comments so far. And in terms of officers, thank you, looking into the further tests, so we've got more information today. In terms of the encroachment on green belt, I'm really concerned with that with the fundamentally not a large enough area to be of concern. How many hectares would that need to be to be an area of concern? And if we continue to approve small areas of green belt, then that becomes a large area overall. So I'm just worried about in terms of when something is described as not fundamentally not large enough on the green belt and how many hectares might that be? And then the fire chief's guidance on two points that isn't on the guidance as it is currently. I'm wondering if we normally approve something that's based on guidance that is about to come in opposed to guidance that is now. And if they're both based on fire safety as well, that that's actually about public concern. So we should probably be taking that more seriously than just thinking that we'll base it on future guidance. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. It's it's an impossible question to answer, I'm afraid, at the moment in terms of encroachment in the green belt and when it becomes fundament when it fundamentally undermines and when it doesn't, it's you can't really put a a figure on that. But I think the way the inspectors, certainly at least one that saw it equating one other decisions dealt with it was when you look at the total area of the the green belt, which is something like thirty thousand hectares, this equates to naught point naught five percent. So they reached a decision on the basis of what's before them at that present time. Obviously, it would take an awful lot of such low percentages for it to cumulatively come to come to an issue or a problem. I'd be surprised if we ever got to that that particular point in time with with best proposals. And sorry, the second one was in terms of the the guidance. Yeah, I think we've got to be slightly careful because that's we've got to have regard to guidance, but it's not actually planning policy. But it's something there to guide us as to whether something is in safe or safe or not. And the inspectors, I think I'm right in saying, we don't have an objection from the fire service to this particular proposal. All they've done is they've highlighted what the guidance, what the guidance says and we're aware of the the shortfalls. So from a from a planning perspective, I suppose what the inspectors have done and what we've done is we've looked at the evidence which is there. And on the basis of the evidence which is there, essentially that the fire service can get to the unhindered can get to the the bears and that the technology is such that it controls any effects from a fire, the ignition from stopping it from spreading and they've got sufficient water on site, et cetera, to to cope with those instances. The evidence all points to the fact that now these are, say, we have that. I don't think we've actually seen them revise draft guidance coming through from the fire chiefs yet. I don't think that's been published. I might be wrong on that, but we haven't seen it anyway.
Councillor Miller?
I've got some comments. I don't know if there's any of the questions first.
Well, wait for the comments. If anybody has a question and then we'll move on to comments if that's okay. Councillor Ray?
Thank you. Just on the back of councillor Bromley's questions. I appreciate what you're saying about technologies improved. But also we're in a climate situation where we're having excessive heat waves and we've seen wildfires all over Europe, but in England. Has that been taken into consideration and measured against the new technology?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not even sure if it's been raised as an issue, councillor.
Thank you, councillor.
Can you tell me what's changed from the last meeting to this meeting regarding the reduction of causing fire? Because I remember there was issues about how close the batteries were together. We never seemed to get an answer either way regarding the access to water and the pollution of water should the fire service have to attend.
Yes, councillor, there's there's been no change since the the last the last plans panel. The distance between the batteries remains the same. I think it's around about three metres. And the access is is still the same. The the access to the water and the suds pond, that's all, the proposal is exactly the same as it was last time. So the judgments that we came to in terms of officers and the advice that we gave is the same as previously too.
Yeah, so two points really. One is what consultation has there been with CAC? And what consultation has there been with the Green Spaces Directorate of the Council?
Sorry, councillor, the the consultations that have taken place in terms of the planning consultations are set out on pages thirty one to thirty two of the the papers. They're the relevant ones that we would have for this particular proposal. Is there, sorry, is there a particular point?
I couldn't see it actually had been to the Green Spaces and environment Directorate. It just says local environment, I think.
Yeah, in in terms of we we've we've consulted with our landscape team, our conservation design and design teams and public rights of public rights of way. But in in terms of the the planning aspects and the environmental impact, as it were, in in the planning context on the landscape, if that's what you're driving at, we would normally go to our landscape team on on that. So am I missing the point, councillor?
That's okay. No, I, you know, it's it's a fine point in a way, but so the the Green Spaces team are the people who sort of monitor the the CAC and the whole climate change aspects of the policy of the council. So I'm just asking whether we've actually directly run that past that team or and or the CAC committee.
No, no, we haven't. We haven't done done that in this particular particular instance. Primarily because I think we're we're sort of aware of the the technology and the contribution that that makes to net zero and how it functions.
Right, can we now move on to the comments? I have a question. Okay.
Sorry, just the last one. Just about hectares. How does the area of this particular application compare to the two appeals?
This one is the total application site areas one point seven hectares. One of the appeals was exactly the same size in terms of site area, although the amount of there might be some minor variations in terms of the amount of which is dedicated to the amount of site which is dedicated to the batteries. The other side was, I think, the Carlton site, I think it was the Carlton site, it was two point five hectares. So that that was a bigger site.
Right, councillor Miller?
Thank you, Chair. For those members that weren't at the meeting or perhaps haven't had the chance to read the minutes, I'd just like to remind everyone the reasons that we voted to refuse the officer recommendation. And they were around two elements to which this policy does go against green belt. Green belt policy. And there's no question today that this application doesn't assist in, it doesn't assist in safeguarding the countryside from encroachment and wouldn't recycle derelict land. Now, obviously, there's a big debate to be had about what weight applies to those objections to the policy. And obviously, officers are recommending that we approve the policy and are basing that off in in large part off two successful appeals. The difference in regard to this application, which does, in my opinion, carry significant weight, is that this is in a special landscaping areas, it's special landscaping area and the other the other two appeals were not in that area. This gives significantly more weight to the idea that this is green belt land and is not grey belt land. At the minute, obviously, officers have interpreted this land as grey belt. I don't agree with that interpretation and that's why I've spoken against this application. I'll be proposing when it comes to it that we do reject and refuse this application using the language of the point one and point two set out in the officer's report. I'd also just like to make one point in regards to a reference to political decision making. Political decision making in this case would be us opposing an application purely off the basis of saving the council money. We are here to vote on planning law. We are not here to save the council money. We can take that into consideration, but that is not our role at this meeting. We're here to decide on planning law. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Any other comments? Yes, Dave?
Are there going to be any submissions from the parties of this case? Or are we just going to be left to our own devices?
No, we're there's no public speaking on on this particular item. The protocol doesn't allow for public speaking when we're bringing reports such as this back to plans panel.
Thank you. Any other comments? Shall we now move on to? Can I ask David to sum up, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. There's obviously been quite a wide discussion with some differing views across the table on this particular application. It it really now falls for members whether members want to endorse the suggested reasons for refusal set out on pages nineteen and twenty of the report. Or if not, come to an alternative decision.
Thank you. Can I can I take a word and could I have a proposal in a second or please? Councillor Miller to propose?
Yeah, I propose that we refuse the application on the basis of the language set out on page nineteen and twenty.
Okay, anyone to second? Thank you, councillor Bromley. All in favour? Thank you, councillor Bromley. All in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions?
Right, glad to confirm the vote.
Right, so there were five in fa, six in favour, one against, one abstention. So that's carried. Or two against, sorry.
Sorry, Chair, there was six four.
Six four?
Yeah, two against and no abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. Just confirm then that members have resolved that planning permission should be refused for the reasons set out on pages nineteen and twenty to panel papers. So that's on grounds of inappropriate development in the green belt and failure to adequately mitigate the reduce of the risk of fire. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Date and time for next meeting is Thursday eighteenth of September at one thirty P M. That concludes the meeting. If everyone could please vacate the room and make sure that you take your cups and glasses back where you found them. So enjoy the rest of your afternoon.